All right, welcome everyone to the City of International Falls Regular City Council Meeting for Monday, January 6th, 2020. It is a little bit different. We're at our 5:30 meeting. We are going to be running 5:30 meetings for the first three months of 2020, just to make sure that we're giving an opportunity for residents and the community to come in and be part of our council meetings. So we have changed the time from 4:30 to 5:30 for our first three months of the, first three month meetings of the year. With that being said, if everyone could join me and give the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Our first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. At this time, we don't have any additions to the agenda. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus.
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries, five zero. Next, we have the approval of the minutes from our regular meeting of December 16th, 2019. Chair would entertain a motion on those minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Deech. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries, five zero. Administrator, just a note, Counselor Kraus had noticed before that we didn't have our meeting from Friday minutes, from our special meeting, so that will be in our next packet.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Next, we have the payment of claims and approval of payment for accounts payable. We have a lodging tax fund of number four, or I'm sorry, 812, in the amount of 23186 being transferred. Accounts payable claims, the City of International Falls regular claims from calendar year 2019 will be 3,200, I'm sorry, 329,359 and 2 cents. Payable claims for 2020 would be 200, wow, I'm having a hard time with math today, 228,224 dollars and 6 cents. Airport commission claims, 36,345 dollars even. No airport Phase 1 claims. Terminal project Phase 2, 91,592 dollars and 85 cents. Again, no Phase 1 claims for the runway reconstruction project. Phase 2 for the runway reconstruction project will be 368,375 dollars even. And runway reconstruction project Phase 3 claims of 75,100 dollars. For a total of accounts payable of 1,128,995 dollars and 93 cents. The Chair would entertain a motion for, to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
We have a motion to adopt the resolution by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Nelson. Motion and second, any discussion?
Please, just to let the people know that the runway construction project of Phase 1 and Phase, or Phase 2 and Phase 3 has been tree removal that they've been doing this fall. So if you're wondering what's been going on, it's been so cold out, it's been clearing, clearing grubbing, so.
Okay.
Just make note.
I appreciate that. Any other discussion on the accounts payable? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries. Next is audience. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to discuss something that is not on the agenda? Please come on up.
Hello, my name is Bobby Bernath, and I have a concern that, I've been watching Go On for quite some time, and I decided to, December 27th of 2019, when I seen this happen, I got pretty frustrated, and I thought, well, I better bring it to the council and the mayor to find out what is really going on. I come out to the grocery store at Super 1, and I see the ambulance pulling up with two workers getting out, going in, and I said, what is going on? And they laughed at me. So that got me frustrated. So I got in my car, and I went and did some business uptown, come around to Holiday Gas Station. I see the ambulance coming down 11th Street, and I'm thinking, you know what? They're probably going to get gas. Well, I live in, down on Sixth Avenue West, so as I go down, they turn, go south, guess where they go? To Dairy Queen. So my concern is, is that ambulance being used for personal vehicle use rather than ambulance runs? The other thing worries me a little bit is, we are in deficit of, I'm not sure the amount of money, but we are in big deficit, and these people are running around with our ambulance. How is the mileage being justified on that? And I could go on and on, but I just would like to have some investigation done on this, because I don't think I'm the only one in town that sees this. So, thank you very much for listening.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any questions for me?
Does anyone, I don't have any questions.
Have you talked to Adam Manasa at all?
I have not.
Okay.
I guess I didn't know really where to go on this.
That's okay, I was just wondering, you know, if were the first place you went, or how.
Yes, actually, I am, I called a couple counselors, and I said, what do I do? I wasn't, I was told to come here, and then from here, I can go talk to Adam and ask him questions too, I, you know. I just feel that it is a big expense, running around town in the ambulance, when it should be used for emergency use only, I think. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bobby.
Thank you, Bobby.
Administrator, did you want to make a comment?
I do.
Okay, please.
Mayor Council, just for the council's information, we, we do not allow the use of city vehicles or city equipment for personal use at all in the city. That would be contrary to our policy. The council is aware of the fact that our emergency personnel are on emergency response 24/7, so there are occasions where we will take an ambulance rig over to, because we work 24/7 and 12-hour shifts, sometimes they will take the rig over with two personnel to make sure that we have, they cook meals at the fire hall when they're on duty, so that they can eat. And occasionally, they will go pick up food at various restaurant establishments in the community, because they need to eat as well. And of course, if a fire call comes in, or an emergency call, rather, for the ambulance, they're going to respond immediately for, to those calls from wherever they're located. There's also a, a number of maintenance items that we have to do in the fire hall with our equipment and stuff, so oftentimes, the council and the public will see city vehicles over at locations such as formerly at Sears or at Menards in particular, picking up supplies and equipment that we need for the Public Works Department, as well as the Fire and Ambulance Department. So, having said that, I can go and check what happened on December 27th, and see if the fire chief is aware of anything that was out of the ordinary and not consistent with city policy, and then I can report back to Ms. Bernath about that when I learn more from the fire chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have something for the council that's not on the agenda? Thank you, Bobby. Next, we will go to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is items of normal business that usually will have a unanimous vote. There is no discussion on any of the items that are on the consent agenda. Today, we have 2019 license renewals. One would be, and that would be Holler's Property Maintenance No-Plow License. To approve the travel and continuing education for training expenses for Kelly Myers to attend the ICC Upper Great Plains Regional 3 Education Institute on February 3rd through 7th in Chaska. To approve the IRS mileage reimbursement rate for 2020, and a resolution delegating authority to make electronic transfers to the financial office, from, to financial officer and the deputy city administrator for 2020. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Buller. With no discussion, question?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, five zero. Next, we'll go to new business, and we have a mayoral proclamation declaring January 2020 Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month, and January 11th specifically as human, National Human Trafficking Awareness Day. Ms. Nancy Lee.
Thank you for letting me come tonight. That was great. I'm here on behalf of Rotary, actually, and International Falls Rotary, as well as others in Minnesota, North Dakota, Western Wisconsin, and parts of Ontario, have started an endeavor for awareness and education on human trafficking awareness. And there's a proclamation, as was read, January is National Human Trafficking Awareness Month, as well as January 11th, Human Trafficking Awareness Day. And I forwarded a proclamation to Mr. Anderson. I think he got it.
Mm-hmm, we've received it.
Okay. And if, if I ask if we could have that read and approved and published, that would be great.
All right. Does anyone have any questions? All right. Chair would entertain a motion to declare January 2020 Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month, and January 11th, 2020 as National Human Trafficking Awareness Day.
Right of order.
Please.
You should read the proclamation first.
The City of International Falls, the State of Minnesota, mayoral proclamation. Rotary's initiative to end human trafficking, the month of January 2020, National Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month, and Day of January 11th, 2020, National Human Trafficking Awareness Day. Whereas, human trafficking is a nationwide public health and civil rights crisis. Its victims and survivors are everywhere, and each city and community being no exception. And, whereas, human trafficking includes both forced labor and sex trafficking, and whereas, anyone can be a victim in the U.S., it is estimated that 2 to 4 million victims are being trafficked, trafficked, that's a weird word.
Trafficked.
Trafficked. 75% are exploited for sex, almost half are children, and most are women and girls. Victims come from all demographics. Traffickers target individuals who, for various reasons, are vulnerable. And, whereas, Minnesota's Safe Harbor law recognizes that any youth under the age of 18 who is exploited through prostitution will no longer face criminal prosecution, and will instead receive comprehensive and trauma-informed services. These services are available to youth through age 24. And, whereas, in Minnesota, the average age of participants served under Safe Harbor was 17. A slightly higher percentage of youth were in greater Minnesota, 54%, compared to the Twin Cities metro area of 46%. Most participants were female, 91%, white, 6% identified as male, and 3% as transgender, gender nonconforming, and other. More than half, 59% of participants, were people of color. And, whereas Rotary International, specifically Rotary Districts 5950, 5960, and 5580 are striving to increase awareness and promote prevention, the mission of the initiative is to end human trafficking in communities in Minnesota, Wisconsin, North Dakota, and parts of Ontario. Regions covered by Rotary Districts 5950, 5960, and 5580 will coordinate mobilizing Rotarians and clubs throughout the region to engage their communities in this issue. And, whereas, our initiatives focus on raising awareness, educating children and youth, reducing, reducing risk factors that make children and youth vulnerable, and stopping the demand. And, whereas, all communities must seek to prevent human trafficking before it can occur by promoting safe, healthy, and supportive environments by changing the culture of acceptance of this evil. And, whereas, January was first declared as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month in 2010, and Human Trafficking Awareness Day was, is observed every year on January 11th by Presidential Proclamation. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of International Falls is hereby declares January as Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month, and January 11th as Human Trafficking Awareness Day. At this time, Chair would entertain a motion to accept the proclamation.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Counselor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Proclamation is adopted. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have the approval of payroll dates. Every two weeks, on Tuesday, commencing on 1/14/2020. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those payroll dates.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, Kraus beat you to the punch.
Did you beat me?
We have a motion and second to pay our employees every two weeks. Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries. Next is a resolution to designate our depositors, designation of depositors. Chair would entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Nelson. Motion and second, any discussion on the depositors? Question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries. Next is approval of the routine maintenance agreement with the state Minnesota Department of Transportation. City Administrator, do you want to give us some background on that one?
Mr. Mayor, Council, the MinDOTs forwarded an agreement to us for execution, and basically, this agreement specifies how the Minnesota Department of Transportation and the City of International Falls will be associated with maintaining the state highways in the community, and so it, it's an agreement that needs to be executed, and the, you'll note that the total agreement amount is for $15,080.39. It is possible, depending on various other maintenance duties and responsibilities that are performed by the City of International Falls, is that we can pursue additional funding in accordance with this agreement, and so they're asking that the city council adopt the agreement and authorize us to execute it and return it.
All right. With that being said, the Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
I so moved.
All right, Counselor Buller, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. We have a motion and second. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries, five zero. Next on the agenda, we have the designation of our official newspaper for required publications, The Journal. Chair would entertain a motion to make that designation.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deech. Any, any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries. Next, we have the mayoral appointments to members of internal and external committees. Internal committees, there is one change, myself and Counselor Kraus had a discussion last Friday, and I am going to take his position on the land use and legislation. So the request for internal committee appointments would be Counselor Deech to be the Chair of Land Use and Legislation, and add myself as, as also sitting on that, that committee. I would entertain a motion to, to make that change.
So moved.
All right, Counselor Buller, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Nelson. Any discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, four, zero, and one abstention. Next, we have Human Resources. Again, I'm taking Counselor Kraus off and adding myself. Chair would entertain that motion.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Buller. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I was just going to explain it after I looked at it, of why we're doing it. Please, go for it, go for it.
Just let it be noted that since I was appointed the Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, that is a very large committee with a very large time commitment, so to prevent an overload of work, along with other committees that I sit on that are not being appointed tonight, it was decided that it would make sense to spread the workload out a little bit.
And a follow-up to, to what Counselor Kraus is saying. Right now, we have five internal committees of the city. We have HR, a committee, well, five, actually. HR, Land Use and Legislation. Oh, don't do this.
Budget and Finance.
Budget and Finance, Recre, no, that's not one of them. Public Works. So the way it works out is, every one of our members of our, our city council will be chairing a committee. Counselor Deech will be chairing Land Use and Legislation. Counselor Nelson will be chairing Human Resources. I will be overseeing the committee of the whole. Counselor Kraus will be chairing the Budget and Finance, and Counselor Buller will be overseeing the Public Works. So, the reason that we're making this change is, after, after the passing of Mayor Anderson, a lot of things got kind of thrown apart, and so we're just trying to clean it up so that we all have one committee that we oversee. So that's what the changes were intended for. With that being said, any other discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries, five zero. Next, external committee appointments. I did spend a lot of time working on these, and I did send out a letter to our city counselors on just my thoughts of my appointments. So, my first appointment would be to the Fire Civil Service Commission. I would like to appoint Ben Pavlik for a term starting this, this January, and serving until December 31st, 2022. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that appointment.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deech. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Do we have to appoint these by council action, one by one, or can we do the whole?
We could do them all, all at once.
Assuming we have no...
But you don't know if there's going to be a concern on any of them. So historically, what we have done is them individually, and it is our last item on our agenda, so we should be able to get through it before midnight.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion and second for the Fire Civil Service Commission. Hearing no discussion, question?
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes. Motion carries. Next is Housing and Redevelopment Authority. It would be my position to reappoint Arthur Holt, serving from January 1st, 2020 to December 31st, 2024. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that appointment.
Motion?
We have a motion by Counselor Deech. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Any discussion? I did receive a letter of recommendation from the HRA Director, and I did call them back. They have their meetings on the, the second Monday of every month, coincidentally, at when we have our, our Committee of the Whole meeting, but one of these days, I'd really like to go over there and have a conversation with the HRA, and just kind of discuss some, some of the stuff with our housing study with them, and see, see if there's some additional work we can do over there, so. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, question?
So moved, or yes.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
I'll vote aye, too.
There you go.
There we go. Five zero. Yes works.
So taken.
We only get one yes. All right. Library Board of Trustees, we can do all three of these. These were all reappointments. I was able to go to last month's Library Board of Trustees. I worked, sat down with them, great group of, great board. I did talk to Diane Adams at the library, and she highly recommended these three people to be reappointed. The first would be John Dalton, second would be Ashley Koscheck, and the third would be Darcy Sullivan, all of them serving from January 1st, 2020 to December 31st, 2022.
Move to reappoint.
We have a motion to reappoint by Counselor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Nelson. Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries, five zero. Next, we have the Northeast Area Transportation Partnership Board. I would appoint our city administrator, Ken Anderson, and a alternate of our Public Works Director, Gary Skolman.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Any discussion?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Next, we'll go to the North Kooch Sanitary, Area Sanitary District. We'll do this in two different motions. The first would be to reappoint Terry Murray, starting on February 1st, 2020, and serving until January 31st, 2023. Just a memory for you guys, we, we appointed Terry Murray just last month to fill in Mayor Anderson's position. So the Chair would entertain a motion to reappoint.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Deech. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, five zero. Next would be an appointment of Crystal Clance to the North Kooch Sanitary District. It would start on February 1st, 2020, and run until January 31st, 2023. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that appointment.
So moved.
We have an appointment by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Counselor Nelson. We have a motion and second. Any discussion? I would just like to say, of all the I would just like to say of all the people that would be new going on to a board, Crystal Clance has sat in those sewer board meetings as far as I've been back on city council, so I'm fairly certain the learning curve shouldn't be too terribly steep, so I look forward to your service, Crystal. No other discussion, question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Planning Commission will do this in three different sections. I have two reappointments. One would be Joanne Dornhecker from January 1, 2020 to December 31, 2022, and a reappointment of Brian Yusso, January 1, 2020 to December 31, 2022. Chair would entertain a motion to do those two reappointments.
I'll move it.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Nelson. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries. Next would be an appointment of Tara Besch. She will be filling in the vacant seat that was on the Planning Commission and that would be serving from January 1, 2020 to December 31, 2022. The reason I went with Ms. Besch is her background with the county is in county health and a big portion of our planning, our comprehensive plan is on recreation, walkable paths, healthy living, so it made sense to have someone that works and breathes every day to be on that Planning Commission. With that being said, the chair would entertain a motion to accept that appointment.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Next is another appointment and this is serving for a resignation. We did receive a resignation late last year from one of the planning and zoning members and that was, I'm sorry, Pete Schultz. And I'm going to fill Pete Schultz's position with Haley Silvers. Again, for the same reason as Ms. Besch with what she does for recreation and healthy living and being a big piece of our comprehensive plan, I would like to appoint Haley Silvers to the Planning Commission. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that appointment.
So moved.
We have an appointment, a motion by Councilor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilor Buller.
You were watching me, waiting for my mouth to move.
So we have a motion and a second to approve Haley Silvers. Question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Next is the Police Civil Service Commission. I would like to appoint Terry Wood. That would be from January 1, 2020 to December 31, 2022.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Nelson. Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries. Next, we have a two-part zoning board of appeals. Historically, the zoning board of appeals has had a lot of the planning and zoning members on it. The recommendation according to the charter is to have one member from your planning or your planning commission on the zoning board of appeals. So what I'm trying to do is take some of those people that were on the planning commission off of the zoning board of appeals and make it two separate boards, because realistically, I think that that's what the charter actually had intended when it was written. Within the last two months, we appointed Mike Klopocky. He is definitely interested in serving again, so I would like to reappoint Mike Klopocky to serve through December 31, 2024.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deech. Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 Most, or I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. And again, we had a resignation from Mr. Pete Schultz on the zoning board of appeals and I would like to appoint Len Peterson to that role and his term would end on December 31, 2021 and that is filling in the vacancy from an unexpired term. So chair would entertain a motion to make that appointment.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Is there any other business to become?
Mayor, being on the Blight Committee and getting an early start on, I think we really have to get a jump start on our blight this year. What I would like to ask is our council members to come up with five areas in their ward, and you two also, in their ward that they consider a big blight issue. So we have that when we come to committee. We have to get going on this. As I say, now is the time, it's the beginning of the year, we should be jumping on this blight issue right away. And as we said, we're going to be talking about some of the rules and regulations at a committee meeting, but I would like to have something in hand.
I completely 100% agree with that and because now is probably the time we need to be worried about summer and summer is really the time we need to be worried about how we're going to handle winter issues so we can have some plan going into the timeframe so we're not hitting a wall of what do we do now. I would definitely fill out, figure out some information, I can put it in your box. Other city councilors, are you guys willing to kind of outline what you guys would like to see the ad hoc blight committee come up with and give it to Councilor Deech?
Excuse me, and it can be residential, it can be business, whatever it may be. As I say, we moved forward last year and we did a pretty good job, but we do have a long ways to go and the earlier we get rolling, the quicker it's going to get done, hopefully.
I completely agree. Any other business? All right, hearing none, reports of the administrator?
Mayor, council, real quickly, I did submit an application to the Arrowhead Regional Development Commission on Friday for federal transportation alternative grant monies and that request was for approximately $230,000 in monies to assist with a bituminous trail on a sidewalk as part of the Safe Routes to School program. Secondly, I just wanted to let the council know that there is a planning commission meeting scheduled tonight to start immediately after this meeting after 6 o'clock and that's just to consider the comprehensive plan and there is a draft resolution for them to make a recommendation of the city council and assuming that they move forward to do that, then the council will have the comprehensive plan on your agenda January 21 to consider. And then finally, I would just, for the council's information and perhaps for action, I did and the mayor received a copy of an email from Tricia Hyville, who's the president of the Area Chamber of Commerce. She's pointing out that Icebox Days will be held on January 16 to the 19th. It's the 40th Annual Icebox Days Festival and the city is scheduled to participate as we always do in assisting with plowing and sanding the route and start for the finish area for the race, some traffic control barricade cone and sign placement as well as emergency services and issues of that nature. So in the past, historically, we've had the council authorization to move forward with that assistance. I don't know if the council wants to take action on that or if we can just proceed without
Council's pleasure.
Do we ask Ted?
He's going to be participating in assisting, probably seek council authorization to move forward, again, for information purposes and for the public's information on Saturday, January 18 at 6:00. We will also have the fireworks display and the fire department will be proceeding with that. That's at 6:00 PM at Smokey Bear Park. And then new this year is an icebox scavenger hunt and that'll be coordinated with the International Falls Recreation Commission. The chamber's not involved in that, but I want to make sure that the council and the public are aware of that as well.
All right. Well, I don't see any harm in approving everything and making it official that the city is behind it, so the chair would entertain a motion to accept the recommendations to put on Icebox Days as outlined by the city administrator through the email from the Chamber of Commerce.
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries. Anything else, administrator?
No.
Okay. Department heads, I know we have a couple here for the planning and zoning meeting behind. Just for the public's knowledge, this is a little unique situation. We, for the first time, we don't have our fire chief and our police chief here. We have made a couple of small changes in the way that we're handling our business. We are doing committee of the whole meetings where we're bringing in our department heads and we're having full conversations with department heads for long-term planning and doing some stuff. So one of the things that we decided is if we're getting information from our department heads on goals and everything that we're doing, unless we have some specific questions and we would ask those department heads to come in at the meetings that we discuss plans, but as a general rule, we're not going to have our fire chief or our police chief present for our regular city council meetings unless they have something on the agenda to discuss at the meetings themselves. They do submit, both the police and the fire chief submit a monthly report and there's been many meetings where we sit through an entire meeting and then they say, you've received our report, we have this. So we're just trying to be more mindful of our employees' time as well as those that come to our meetings. So that was one of the things that we had decided at the end of last year, so that's why the police and fire chief are not here. Reports of the mayor, council committees, boards and commissions. I have one thing that came up legitimately before I came to this meeting. We have an opportunity to showcase Icebox Days on Friday with Fox 21 News in Duluth. I've been asked to potentially be one of the speakers there, but if I do it, I'm going to have to incur travel costs just to Duluth and back. There would be no hotel or whatever, so I would ask the council if you're willing to allow me to have travel expenses to go to Duluth in the event that that moves forward.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deech. Discussion?
Any publicity is good publicity.
That's how I'm looking at it. And this actually came about from the chamber. They did something a little bit different this year. They did advertise yesterday in Sunday's paper, Icebox Days and all of our events and the news agencies in Duluth wanted to pick up a little bit more information about it, so I think that, just like you said, any publicity is good publicity. So that's the background on that and I literally got the phone call before I came up here. So with no other discussion, question?
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes, motion carries. The only other thing I'd like to say is there has been a lot of concern about Midco. I did put some information up on my Facebook page this morning. I was able to get ahold of two people at Midco. One called me back just before this. They said that the equipment that they needed to fix the television station should, or the television issues should be in International Falls and they're hoping to install it this evening in the overnight. So a lot of the problems that have been incurring should be theoretically fixed by tomorrow, but this is actually a conversation piece because we have a charter commission, I'm sorry, not charter commission, cable commission that has five members of our city that has not been filled for years and as I was making out my appointments, that was a question I had is should we have our cable commission filled because their really only duty, as I had read through it, is deal with customer complaints and negotiate a contract. As I understand it, talking to a handful of staff, the reason why we have a hard time filling that particular role is because they just get called for complaints and so we kind of have not filled that position. So not asking to fill those positions at this time, hopefully this fixes the problem, but that, it's just weird timing that we're doing appointments and then that was one that I chose not to do and it would have been a great time to have done that, so. That's the only piece on that. Hopefully, the Midco stuff has been, will be resolved this evening. Follow-up on, one last follow-up for me. We, in November, had requested that our partnership organizations with the county through KITA, the Airport Commission and with the school district with the joint powers agreement for the rec commission work on changing the bylaws and I'm happy to announce that the first reading of the bylaw changes for the rec commission were done last month. They will be having a second reading of the bylaws for the rec commission this month to allow the city and the school district to make three appointments each. So the city will have three appointments to put on the rec commission. One of them will have to be a city counselor or the mayor. The school district will now have three appointments that they can make. One of them will have to be a school board member. The other two can be in their taxing district of the school district and then those six people that are appointed would appoint the three at large, so it doesn't change the amount of people that will be on the rec commission, it just changes how the setup is. We also are looking in, I believe, January at having a meeting with the Airport Commission to address bylaw changes after our regular meeting. That's going to be going on for the next couple of months, obviously, because there's some bigger changes than just appointments that need to be taken care of on the Airport Commission. And KITA is looking at formally introducing some advisory boards that will bring members of our community that are knowledgeable in specific genres to be able to help us lead forward in trying to incur and help businesses grow in our communities. So that is what stemmed from our conversations in November, where it seems as if we're moving forward pretty well on all three fronts. They're all a little bit different, but I think we have some really good stuff happening on those boards and commissions. So with that being said, I have nothing else. Anybody from the audience have anything to bring forward? Hearing none, there is some correspondence in your packets, the 2018 Water Forwardation Quality Award, Visitors and Convention Bureau minutes and the Library Board meeting minutes. Our next meeting will be on Monday, I'm sorry, yeah, our next meeting will be on Tuesday, January 21 due to the Martin Luther King Holiday on January 20 at 5:30. At this point, this meeting is adjourned.